And Ed, about some of the comments, the board and its professionals made.
Take a five-minute break?
Yeah, can you do that?
Can we do that, Mr. Kittredge?
What, everybody, how about if everybody just mutes their screen and we'll come back in five minutes, all right?
I got the timer on.
Okay.
Problem is, yeah, I don't know.
From when we saw the lot this morning.
No, that's the one now. Not last, the next one is. Kristi, we ready to go?
We're ready.
All right, everybody back, Mr. Hirsch?
All right, let me get him for you.
Let's go, team, come back. Back, everybody. Kristi, we gotta take attendance when we come back?
Yep.
All right.
She should be chairman of these boards.
Not chairman, she's secretary. Chairman, she's a paid thing. You're gonna be in the picture, you know.
Yeah.
Yep, I can see her, right up in the corner.
We all back?
No, I see Ray Wade's missing, Deidre's missing.
I'm back.
Okay.
David's back.
Ms. Phillips, there she is.
Mr. Wade, where's Mr. Wade?
Just remind my board members, please unmute yourselves, because I have to take roll.
Everybody back?
Still waiting for Mr. Wade, I don't see him.
Is Terry back?
Yep.
Debbie back, Dennis back?
Yep.
Mr. Wade, you're back, unmute yourself.
There he comes.
Unmute yourself.
There he is.
Unmute, Ray.
Okay, there we go, we're back. Take attention with four and a half minutes.
Okay. Mr. Refuso.
Here.
Mr. Quinlan?
Unmute, Ms. Bob. Down there somewhere.
Wave your hand, he's here.
Wave your hand. Bob, wave your hand at your back. He just waved his hand.
Okay. Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Cortelli?
Here.
I'm here.
Ms. Brunel?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you now, Bob. Deb Brunel?
Here.
Okay. And Chair Rosenberg?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Okay, you were with us earlier.
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Oh, he's not here yet.
Are you guys done with your conversation, Mr. Gilleski?
It looks like they're on their way back right now.
Okay.
We back on the record?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have to put your video on, Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was, I took it off, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. I know you couldn't wait to see me again.
Right.
All right, yeah, all right, so, you know, here, let me move this one.
There you go.
Here's what I'm, you know, like kinda hearing, you know, there's all sorts of issues about this, you know, the rear deck or the total square footage. You know, so that I think there's potentially options, there's like, well, maybe we reduce the sides of the front and rear deck, but leave them both, maybe even gets within the 50%, I don't know, without doing calculations. I mean, that's a possibility. My client, who I can put back on with testimony, but I'll just summarize for you. He said the rear deck was important to him because of the sunset, all right? He will testify that the home to the rear is behind the garage, is somewhere between, I don't know, 60 to 80 feet, it's all backyard. The house next to that is all backyard before you get to the house. So, I'm not sure, I heard something about other homes might be right on the property line, that's not what my client is telling me. I don't know the answer to that, but I would put him back on to testify. So he doesn't see what this impact is gonna be to the rear, to the rear. I mean, if these decks are the width of the house, even if you cut two or three feet off them, I mean, that's a lot of square footage. So I'm just trying to suggest ways that we could either get close to the 50% or else, you know, try to address your concerns about, you know, this rear deck by making it maybe slightly smaller. Because if it push came to shove, he'd said he'd rather get rid of the front deck than the rear deck. So, yeah, so, I mean, they're the option, I don't know if the board has any thoughts on whether it would compromise in terms of its position about the rear deck if it was somewhat smaller than it was. For the reasons I just stated, I put Mr. Walsh back on to explain where those rear properties are and why he won't, doesn't believe this has any impact on those properties. You know, so I'm just trying to get a sense, so we can work through this.
I think you did get a sense that.
Well, that's what I, no, it's what I just said.
But the rear deck is, I think, the problem there.
That's what I was just trying to address.
I mean, Mr. Frida.
I'm not sure why it's a problem, Mr. Frida was suggesting there was other homes, you know, nearby to the rear that would have some impact. As I said, I know there's a lot of other rear decks, second or third floor decks, but he was saying that those homes are quite a distance from his rear property line. So, I'm trying to be goal-oriented, you know, what adverse impact are we addressing? And that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, can I, can I jump in?
Yes, sure, I wish you would, maybe you can help.
Okay, so, and he's correct about the distance to the property behind him. But all along the east side, the properties on Ocean Avenue butt up against his property. There, there's at least four houses that are right there, right up on a property line.
I think some of those are summer rentals, Jerry, but I'm not sure.
That, that could be, I mean, but the point still is, you know, somebody could come and try and develop, you know, further develop those into, you know, down the road, so.
They could, yeah, with third floor decks.
Let's hope not. May I say something?
Yes, Dan.
Yeah, Mr. Frida, the 908 and the house next to it on Ocean Avenue, they're summer rentals. The house directly behind my backyard, there's no windows on his left-hand side of his house because of the new construction and fire codes that were designed when he was there. So the, there's no impact going, when I'm looking out the back, to, there's not, there's a backyard and it's 60, 70 feet until there's a house, it doesn't affect the house behind, on the, to the right of the, the back of that house or the house on the next block, it doesn't affect it at all. I could shrink that deck upstairs, if I brought the deck two feet back towards the back of the house, the inside of it, and I would be under the 50, I would still be around 50% of habitable use with it. I don't know what else to say, we, you know.
So, so you were, you're basically saying you're willing to pull the back railing in about two feet or something like that?
Well, I was gonna push the back of the house out towards the back.
What you suggested, Jerry, about some additional space up there.
I got it.
Would make up, there's a, there's a, the habitable space is about 63 square feet short of the.
50, 50%, I got you.
If I push two feet back, that's 50 feet, I'm still under the 50% for habitable space inside the building.
And then that would leave your, the back area about seven and a half feet instead of nine and a half feet?
Yes.
In width, so that the board understands.
In depth, in depth.
Yes.
Right, yes, that's, you know, I could do that and I was still conforming to the inside of the building as far as habitable space. If you want me to push the front out, I could do that also, I don't.
It's, it's not really a matter of what I want.
Tell me I have a good connection with this stupid meeting.
Yeah, no, I'm okay.
Because I don't, ask her if she.
Okay. Well, hold on, hold on, so, so, this is the kind of dialogue I think that the board was looking for. So, a- and again, I love the plan myself, that's not the point, the point is, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the ordinance as it is. Anything that you just suggest that I believe is a positive towards your application. The board has to make that determination, not, not I.
Okay. To push it back, I still fall under the 50%.
Board? Can the board give?
Go ahead, Mr. Hirsch. Hirsch. Searls.
Yeah, I think he wants the board to give some feedback.
You can get some feedback, I mean, Jerry, you heard his comments, my client's comments, you know, that we could extend that third half-story out, you know, for, as previously suggested by Jerry, and cut two feet off the, the rear deck, you know, obviously by the entire width, that's a lot of square footage. You know, if need be, they could cut a little off the front, I don't, I'm not sure if that's really an issue. So that's the kind, we're trying to find a way, he wants to be able to get some enjoyment out of this, that view. You heard him testify as to the nature of the other construction around, and we don't think that it does have any, any real impact the way those homes are situated. But does the board have any feelings about that type of compromise?
I don't know, I think that's great, I think what Mrs. Spillman said, she was very articulate and sweet, and I think that the garage apartment, you could put a window up there, because I know the same thing happened to me. And your neighbors are really, you know, supporting you, so are we. You know, with that, putting a window for her, that's all she asked for, and I think that's easily compromised, you know. At the back as well.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Gilleski would have to answer, I can't, I don't know the answer to that architecturally, but if you can put a window in or not, that's fine.
Because I have, I have a stairway myself, and it depends how the stairs go. If it goes up and then a little landing, then it's perfect place for a little window, it gives you circulation up there. It's wonderful, depends how those stairs go, so I'm just saying that, having lived it myself, in retrospect, I wish that I had did exactly what she said and had the stairs on the other side, but, and I don't think it is that difficult, so.
Max Refuso.
My position is this.
Can you put a window in there?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, fine, no problem.
Okay, we can put the window in.
Mr. Refuso.
My, my feeling is this, you know, and I'm sorry to, you know, dash your plans, but this issue of the third-story rear deck is really a non-starter for me. If you wanna play with the front deck, if you wanna move the dwelling part of the building back and, and make the front deck bigger, I'm more than willing to compromise on that. Specifically, my concern is, you're up at least 20 feet and you are able to look down into people's backyards. I know, I know the first question was, can you look across into somebody's dwelling, but you're able to also look down onto some people's backyards. So, that's really my position, I don't mind losing six to one on this, or whatever the vote is, but, but that's where I'm at.
Max, Michael, I'm, I'm agree with you.
Same here, move it back, give him the front deck.
I mean, the back, you could have those beautiful decks in Elmore that are right next to each other like this, that are hidden in and have wraparound privacy as well. So, I mean, we, I ride on my bike all over the place, I look at everything, and I agree with, you know, with the, with the roof.
Do I back and redesign that, Mr. Hirsch? Do I redesign and possibly come back to another meeting?
Um, can I say, can I say something?
Yes, Dan, go ahead.
If I come back with another rear deck, it seems like I'm just gonna get knocked down, so.
You're listening to the board?
Yes. You know, you know.
But any change you, any change you make, if you want to make some changes, you're gonna have to come back to the next meeting anyway.
Oh, I understand what you mean.
Represent, we would let you come back without notification to the next meeting or the meeting after, based on when the plans could be ready.
Just a question. Is, if I came back with a smaller rear deck, am I gonna not get knocked down? I, I'm understanding this.
Listen to the board, I can't tell you what to say, but listen to the comments.
I, I listen.
That's what you're here for, listen.
Some board members feel they don't want any kind of a rear deck, which, you know, despite, I think there's many in town, but that's what they're saying. I don't know if that's the feeling of the entire board or not, but that's what at least some of the board members, and I appreciate the fact that they're, you know, stating what their position is, so you know ahead of time. I know, we thought that perhaps some compromise on the rear deck based on the various examples we've given you throughout town would be, would make sense for somebody to get some enjoyment out of the, out of that area. Because remember, this came in as a variance for, we're over 50% of living space, not, not because rear decks weren't allowed. But we, you know, obviously, if, if that's now the position, we're, we're seeking that relief, we could reduce the amount of relief we need by a redesign that may or may not get you anywhere. And it's, it's hard to do this on the computer here, you know, we can't go outside and talk.
Right.
Perhaps it's best that we carry it to another meeting, what, and we can discuss options with your architect and, you know, come back with a, an alternate plan on the deck. On the deck, one deck, two decks, whatever it may be.
I think that would be, that's a good suggestion.
Can I make one statement? When I first came into Bradley Beach over 35 years ago, first property was right around a corner from this. And in that area of Park Place, Beach, was less than desirable. We, we have somebody now that is willing to invest a large amount of money to try to improve a neighborhood that isn't somewhat dire need of it. If you look at some of the, the properties that are along that first block of Park Place or the second block of Park Place, or Newark Avenue, or beach going towards the lake, it's still not a very desirable area. And I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't have some negotiation here, but, but I think we've got somebody that wants to enhance the neighborhood and make Bradley Beach a better place. And I think there should be some consideration, foot towards that.
Thank you. Are we open for comment now? No, because we don't know what Mr. Hirsch wants to do.
I agree with you, you know, I agree with you.
If you want.
We have to consider, we gotta consider neighbors also, with the decks, and we've been, we've been involved this before. These huge mons, you know, people overlooking one another, and it's too late when it's already built, and then that leaves weight to the next person. Well, here, we have all of these that were done without any regulation prior, that was before us.
So I think the applicant indicated they, they wish to come back with revised plans, is that accurate with the Hirsch?
Yes, Mr. Kittredge, that was my suggestion to Mr. Walsh, the, but what I was gonna say is, if you, you know, I hate the inconvenience of public. If there's people who wanna make statements, we can hear the statements and carry it, you know, people now go to the trouble to tune into these things, I don't wanna cut anybody off, so if they wanna make statements and then carry it, that's fine with me.
I, I agree, I think we have to give people the opportunity, but the, the only thing would add to the members of the public who wanna speak on this application is that the application is going to change, it's not going to be the same application, so please keep that in mind.
Before we do that, Kristi, we have a meeting next meeting?
Yes, the next meeting, well, it depends, do they want our next meeting, which is July 18th? I'm sorry, July 16th or August 20th?
I think we'd like the July meeting.
July.
Yeah, the, the consideration here is dealing with, you know, the decks that, you know, it's not a major, we're not shifting the house or, you know, doing anything drastic. You know, it, it's just about how we, to the extent they can come up with some other ideas that we've kicked back and forth tonight. So, I think the next meeting, they'd be ready.
Okay, and also, also if I could add, Kristi, at the July 16th meeting with these revised plans, members of the public will have the opportunity to comment also at that time, so.
Now to public comment, one minute each, anybody wants to say something?
I, I have members of the public that have had their hand up, the first one is Ms. Januzzi.
Hi, Kim Januzzi, 608 Evergreen Avenue, so.
We're affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
Yes, Mr. Kittredge.
Thank you.
So, just, just two quick comments, the first comment is, just even within the meeting tonight, this application has seemed to evolve in terms of what they were requesting versus, you know, what, what's being considered. So I would urge the board to re-notice, just so that people are very clear about the fact that there's, you know, an upper deck in the rear of a home being requested. And then the second point that I'd like to make is that, you know, as, as many of you are aware, upper-story decks were the subject of many recent meetings. They're, they're not allowed, the ordinance is very clear to say that you can't have a deck above three feet in your yard. Even aside from the living space, they're, they're not allowed, they're an incursion on privacy, and they're, they're, they're just not allowed. The other thing that I would say is, to the extent that the board considers a variance for this, there are clear standards that need to be met, and those weren't even touched upon tonight, so to the extent that this comes back before the board, I would, I would hope that there would be, you know, more rigor around the decisions that need to be made and, and the burdens that need to be met. And I would highlight the standards that Mr. Frida set out in the use variance, which was the first one up before the board tonight. It was very clear what the standards were that, and, and the burdens that needed to be met, so I would, I would encourage that kind of rigor for that discussion, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
Ms. D. Felice?
Yes, I don't have my video on, I'm Robin D. Felice, I'm a couple of houses away at 111 Park Place Avenue.
We're affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
As far as the decks go, I live here, not too far from the ocean myself, and even though there are decks in the front of the house, sometimes the wind is so bad you cannot sit out there. To spend this amount of money on a home and this amount of money on property taxes, sometimes you need to sit in the back of your house. And at the end of the night, I like to sit out on my deck and, you know, just enjoy the, the smell of the ocean and enjoy, you know, just a sight, sometimes you can see people walking on the boardwalk. So I think if the deck, if you wanted it to be a little bit smaller, so you can't have, you know, 10, 12, 20 people out there, that might be fine, have a little bit smaller deck, but at least the homeowner should be able to have a spot to go and sit, even on bad, you know, northeast windy days. I, and I think that the, the house is gonna, you know, beautify our street, and I think if you want the deck to be smaller, so maybe the homeowner could just sit there with one or two or three or four other people, that's fine, but I don't think you should say you can't have the deck, that's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Just a mic? With his hand up?
John.
John Boyle.
John Boyle, 904 Ocean Avenue.
Hello?
Yes.
No, there's, there's somebody by the.
There's a mic and a John.
Hello? Mike or John?
Mike.
You have Mike.
Mike Gretcher, 122B Park Place Avenue, I am, and I am also the agent for 908 Ocean Avenue, and that property is adjacent.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And my, and the property is adjacent to where Danny's built, I've been here for 41 years, and that Monstracy that was there, and he spent the time and the money to knock that thing down, this is going on two years now. And he's a great man here, this whole neighborhood loved Danny and his family. And there's no, and there's, you see about a backyard, look down the back, there is no backyard, there's none. When it comes to my property next to here, just right, we're right up against each other, it'll be his yard, not my yard. And they should have a, a small deck in the back, like Robin was saying, because it does get very windy here, I'm just saying. I wish someone was in writing about how big these decks could be, you just don't make them up as we go around here. If you only have the three-foot deck, fine, a five-foot deck, but don't, don't keep changing the rules as we go, I'm done, thank you.
Now, John.
Thank you, John Boyle, 904 Ocean Avenue.
You gotta be sworn in.
We're affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, for the past 15 years, the property in question that Danny is looking to rehab has been an eyesore, that, that exactly matches the back of my property, the back boundary line of the property in question completely matches my backyard. And the, the side deck for property on Ocean Park looks directly into my back window every morning, and every other property does as well. However, we're a community of neighbors, and everybody in this neighborhood.
Raise my hand?
Excuse me? And everybody, everybody in this neighborhood has treated each other well and with respect. And I think Danny, who's been a property owner for 35 years and is looking to make an improvement and to make a primary residence, should be supported by his neighbors. That's all I have to say tonight, thank you.
Anybody else, Kristi?
Gary Winkler.
We're right across the street from the new proposed space.
Well, you gotta be sworn in there.
Shelley Palumbo, Gary Winkler.
All right, so who's speaking?
Shelley Palumbo.
Okay, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
I do. I also am a supporter of this house and the design, I'm looking directly at it, and looking out my window right now, his back deck is gonna be looking at 809 Ocean, which is a huge three-story condo complex with a fourth-floor balcony. So if anything, the fourth-floor balcony is gonna be looking down at him, not the other way around. And I also feel that if all of his neighbors support this, this build and this layout and this deck, that you guys should also, because we're the ones that are looking at it, not you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Kristi?
John Naples.
Gotta be sworn in, Mr. Naples.
Your address first?
1009 Ocean Avenue.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
I live around a corner from this property, and it's been a white elephant forever. Mr. and Mrs. Walsh purchased this property when no one else wanted it. They, and one thing no one brought up in this meeting was that when they purchased this property, that it was a conforming lot. So they didn't need a lot variance, when, a lot with variance when they purchased this. Somewhere along the line, our mayor council and planning board took an asterisk out of our ordinance book, which made this property non-conforming, which was not fair to the Walsh family. They purchased this property, they didn't need a variance, but because of this asterisk change, they had to come here in front of the board, which was not fair. I've been living on Ocean Avenue for 20 years, they cannot make enough noise on these decks that Ocean Avenue generates. I mean, it's great living on Ocean Avenue, it's a blessing and it's a curse, but there's, you can't compare a deck two houses off Ocean Avenue to four or five blocks back, it's, it's not a, it's not an equal comparison. So, they can't make enough noise to. That's just my opinion, and I think that they invested a lot of money here, and I really hate to see them have to come back for something that's not clear in all ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else, Kristi?
Mr. Colan? Thomas Colan, 612 Third Avenue.
We're affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
The, you know, everyone wants to see the Walshes build this house, there's no doubt about that. And it's a shame that they didn't submit earlier before the asterisk was removed. The board had to deal with that asterisk many times on very small properties, and Mr. Kittredge, you also made the argument about that asterisk in Superior Court with the case on A7.
I, I don't, I don't use the term asterisk unless it's a baseball statistic, so I've never. I, I don't, I don't use the term asterisk unless it's a baseball statistic, so I've never argued asterisk in court.
Yeah, actually, actually the judge couldn't even find it in the book, but it's there.
But there's no, so I'm just commenting on the word asterisk. There's no, there's no asterisk in the zoning ordinances or in the law.
Well, it was, it was the one on the zoning schedule that was really what triggered it. But that being said, you know, I think that Mr. Bliski is a very talented architect and can design a half-story that would, would actually work without a variance. That's what I'm hoping for. You know, some of the exhibits Mr. Hirsch posted on Fifth Avenue are perfect examples of roof lines with small cubby balconies, which would meet the, the ordinance. Privacy is an issue and I appreciate the board following up on that. So I think there really is an opportunity to get this done. I mean, Mr. Frida said it best. The noise does travel from 20 feet in the air and I've experienced it on Park Place Avenue and Ocean Park Avenue while visiting friends there. So the noise does travel when you have large groups on these big decks. But I appreciate the proceeding tonight, Mr. Chairman. We do want the Walshes to build a house and I think they can, they can do a really bang up job in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we're done, Kristi? Nobody else?
Mary Ann Spillman?
Thank you. Yes, I have to.
You got to be sworn in, Ms. Spillman.
Oh, I, I've already spoken.
No, you have to be sworn in.
Again, okay.
What's your?
Right.
State your address.
I, I'm 908, 906 Ocean Avenue.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to echo the, the feeling that a lot of us have in the neighborhood. This is really, this has been an eyesore for so long. And now Danny has come along and is, and putting all this money into a beautiful house. I don't think the roof line needs to be changed or anything. I think it's a very nicely designed house. And I just wanted to echo that sentiment that I share with my neighbors.
Thank you.
Two houses in the front.
Cindy?
It looks like it's going to be fixed for a while.
Mike Cowski, 200 Ocean Park Avenue, Unit 4D, Asen David.
Do I affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
While I echo Mr. Cohen's previous statements, I congratulate the Walshes on, on developing this property, which has been an eyesore. It's right around the corner from me. However, I disagree with the need for third-story decks. I believe they're not only a safety hazard, but they do cause noise to travel. Just because others in the neighborhood have been given the right to have these decks does not make it right moving forward. I believe in their development of the property. Four decks seems excessive to me. The previous existing house, when they purchased it, had one deck. And I think the elimination of especially that rear deck could satisfy the needs of the owner and provide a beautiful house for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Me. I'm back.
Ms. Fody?
Hi, Florence Fody, 118 Park Place Avenue.
We're affirming to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
I do. Thank you for recognizing me. Again, I would just like to stipulate, I've been coming to Bradley Beach for 60 years within Newark Avenue and Park Place Avenue, and there has been a tremendous improvement when new people come into the two-block area and preferably from beach to ocean. There's a lot of bungalows that have been converted, ugly houses into beautiful homes that people are proud of. I, I wish you could see within yourselves to just grant things that are already existing in our town right now. It seems to have been a time lapse where they missed a proceeding and, and the rules have changed. But they've been doing this for over a year and a half now and they've waited two summers now. They don't build in the summer. They didn't build last summer. They're not going to build this summer to the, to prevent the noise and disruption of everybody's summer months. This is a very close-knit area. People stick together here. The noise level is minimal past 10 o'clock because everyone is respectful of each other's privacy and sleep. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Kristi?
Um, Gary Winkler again. I think we're limiting this to five-minute comment.
I had one minute. I'll give you 20 seconds if you let me speak. I'll swear in.
All right, all right. But what quick is the pace, everybody? Say your name, address, and then we go right at it. So.
Gary Winkler, 1001 Ocean Avenue.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
I do. I just want to add, as you've heard from this whole neighborhood now, the Walshes are the family of this neighborhood. And I thought the whole point of this meeting and what the board's job is to do is to make sure that neighbors don't get tortured in any bad way. It's quite the opposite. They are revitalizing our neighborhood. They're, they're putting their foot down and staying forever. It's not going to become a rental. This is the best possible thing that can happen and I please hope you take that in consideration. Allow them to save the neighborhood in this block for us, please.
Thank you. Now we're done? Kristi?
I don't see any more hands raised.
Mr. Hirsch, we're going to carry this till July 16th?
May I say one thing? May I say one thing, please?
Yes.
Okay. When I purchased the property, I had to knock it down because it was.
Well, wait a minute. We're not, I'm sorry.
I just wanted.
Tom, we're not going to do testimony now, so.
I was delayed for a year because I had to put three new holes in it.
We're not, we're not going to, we're not going to have testimony now. You'll be back for testimony.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, we're going to agree to carry it without waiving any, any rights to, under miscellaneous law for the board's timeframe and within which it must act to July 16th without your next meeting, without further notice. And if there's, you know, obviously new plans, you know, we'll have to talk to the architect, the client. I don't know where this will end up, but we will naturally submit those.
Timely matter.
10 days before the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Next case.
All right, so, so anybody who's here tonight, it is going to be without further notice. No further notice will be required and it'll be listed for July 16th.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Next case, Greg Mackay. Mr. Mackay, I saw you. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Oh, there we go.
He must have two things on. You can only be on once.
Just keep one on each other.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Greg Mackay, Block 20 Lot 7, 603 Park Place Avenue. The applicant is seeking variance in the truck condition in the front of the dwelling. New front porch with an open covered deck leading to the second floor and a covered porch at the rear of the dwelling. Present your case.
Yeah, you have two, they're two.
You have two things on. You can't have it on.
You can't be in the same room.
Is it okay right now?
Yeah.
Now we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. I really called my architect, Dan Fortunato, to kind of go over the plans and everything.
Well, you got to be sworn in.
So let me, let me swear you in along with Mr. Fortunato and Ms. Bell and Mr. Frida. Raise your right hand, please. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to tonight's proceeding?
I do.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Mackay.
Dan, are you able to?
Great. Do you want me to take it from here?
Yes, please.
Okay, if you could swear me in, I will speak.
You just got sworn in.
Okay. Okay, my name is Dan Fortunato. I am an architect and the architect for Mr. McKay's project. And we are here today because the zoning requirements for setbacks apparently violate requirements. So what we're trying to do here is get interpretation and approval for what was started in construction because Mr. McKay did apply for a permit, has a permit, started construction, but apparently zoning stepped in and said, no, halt. We have to attend the planning board for today. So what we're trying to do here is just go through the setbacks and requirements and impervious coverage, or building coverage, I should say, and get interpretation on that.
Wait, wait. Did, did you notice for an interpretation or are you looking for a variances?
Oh, I look for a variance. I didn't mean, my, my, I'm smoke. I'm looking for a variable.
Seven variances, right?
There's a lot of them here.
Well, some, some are redundant and, and sort of what I wanted to go over because it sort of repeats itself twice. I guess everybody's looking at the variance 3A1, for example, if people have that in front of them. I'd like to maybe start with that one. The 3A1 basically interprets that, states that the existing porch front yard setback is 11 feet. And I might add that the existing house to start with is, we never increased the size of the front of the house. That's always been. It's 15 and a half feet from the property line. That's always was. And there was a front porch on this structure. So what we did is we basically tore it down. It was unsafe and just going to rebuild it. We rebuilt it, but we're rebuilding it within nine feet of the property line. So that apparently is a violation of the setback requirements, which is item A1. So that's the first variance required. So I don't know if we want to take these one at a time or how you want to handle this exactly. Because 2A2 is really the same thing, except it's above. This has a two-story deck, basically. We have the front first level and then the second level directly above it. So basically, A1 and A2 is essentially the same argument.
If I may, it's Jerry. We can take them both together, if you like, if it's easier. And the reason why we stipulate differences, one is the first floor and the other one is the second floor and the walls aren't consistent. They're, they're different. So that's why we looked at it as two different variances.
Okay. However, the board likes to approach this, it's fine. I don't want to march through all seven of them unless you want to vote one at a time or how you'd like to really do this.
Can I just? It's your case. I suggest you do one and two together and then do each one moving forward.
Mark, Michael?
Sure. I, I just want to understand the procedure of how we're here voting on a variance for a building that's already built.
Yeah, no, are the pictures of what's built? I don't see any of that. Do you have a picture of what was built already?
No, I mean, nothing, nothing as of, as of today, no. But the, I, I, why we're here today, I guess Mr. Greg, Greg can certainly attest to that because we did drawings, we did all the filing, we did everything we had to do. We filed the permit applications and then here we are.
Did you have to permit?
Yes.
There was a stop work order, correct?
Greg, were you issued a stop work order? You're on mute, Greg.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so no, there was never a stop work issue ordered. The plans were all submitted, permits were all issued, work began. And then months into it, after the footing inspections, which we passed, I got a call from, I believe, the, the main building inspector. And he said that he noticed, or he missed the fact that this, that my plans included the additions, which are clearly on the plans. And he told me that I had to go for a zoning variance. And that's what brought us to today. There was never, and there still today, is no stop work order. However, obviously, we had to get, we have to get past this. So that's why I'm here. And from, from my interpretation, from the architect's interpretation, when we went into this, we, we thought we were conforming. I know that there, in the ordinance, it states that within 200 feet of my, of the, of the front porch, if I'm further back than the, my neighbors, then it's allowed. And I'm further back, even with the new, with the new porch, than all of my neighbors, all the way to the main street and, and all the way to Main Street going away from the ocean.
So I guess what my real question is, is if we try to negotiate on anything on here, you have to do demolition, basically, because of the stage that we're at.
That's correct. The foundations have been installed at both levels of the deck with the cob. So it's, yeah, basically construction has already started and short of putting the decking on, on the second level, we're complete.
So, so why don't we just go through everything in my letter in section three?
Okay, on section three, it says the applicant is proposing a roofed porch to the rear of the dwelling. The roof over the porch is not permitted. A variance is required. That, I'm not quite sure why, because we're within the setback requirements. So I'm not sure what the variance is for on that.
You're not allowed a covered roof in the back on, on a deck. That's it.
That simple as that? No, no, nobody has a roof in the back of their house?
No.
It doesn't matter what people have. We're looking at your particular case and in our ordinances, you're not allowed to have a covered roof on the deck. If somebody way back when went for a variance and got one, that could be, I don't know. But, you know, we have to take each case as it comes and the covered decks in the rear yard are not allowed.
Okay, that's approximately a 230 square foot roof, so that would come off the building coverage.
Yes, it would.
Correct?
Yes, it would. Yes.
All right, move on to that one then.
Wait a minute, can you take that roof off?
Well, it's built.
Is that what you guys are proposing?
We're not proposing anything. You have to make the proposal. We just ask questions.
Yes, it is built. It's, it's installed.
But can you take it off?
Well, anything can be taken off. Yeah, it could be taken off.
I, I guess what the board's asking is, I'm sure you guys want to keep what you have built.
Correct.
So, so you need to provide some convincing testimony that why what you have should be left.
Well, it faces south and that's probably the worst possible place to take a roof off because that, that directly goes right into that, that entire back of the house.
So does every house facing north, so it's okay.
Why wouldn't you show us pictures of what was built tonight? I don't, that doesn't seem, doesn't make any sense to me.
I didn't know that was relevant. I thought that's what the plan.
I think it's very relevant. I'd like to see what you built.
Right. I think it's relevant that you come prepared. You're not even prepared to go forward with this.
Well, if I may, if I may, they, they did submit their plans, so we have them, A1 and A2. And it shows, you know, the covered deck in the back. It shows the, it shows the porch in the front and what they want to do with the wall in the front. So.
Does everybody have the plans? Do they have the plans?
Yeah, everyone has a plan.
I mean, if you want to get drawing A2, have elevations and it shows what, what's there.
I feel, I feel bad that you have to rip it down, you know, if there's any way that you don't. That's all I'm saying.
So there, so you're in front of the zoning board because you need a number of variances for your property. There's C variances and there's proofs you need to meet in order for the board to grant those variances. So are you prepared tonight to put testimony on the record as to how you could meet those proofs?
I guess not.
I'm, I'm here tonight to, I don't know, I guess not. I'm just trying to tell you what, what the procedure was that happened with this project and, and go through these variant. I mean, I do want to, we can continue here with the variances. I mean, this whole thing is a testimony. So just testimony tonight is just to basically say that we, we got permits. permits to start a construction and now we're, we're here to go through these variance violations. So shall I continue?
Your decision, Mr. Mackey's decision, what to do.
Well, are, are you? I mean, basically, are you guys advising me that I have to get like an attorney or something?
Always, it's always good to be represented by, by some good, better, by counsel.
Mr. Mackey.
You may want to consider a planner as well, but you should probably talk to an attorney first. Have him review what you have here and ask him, you know, what level of professionals you need to move forward. Yeah, as far as we're concerned, the board, we, we have to react to the ordinance. We reviewed your plans based on your plans and the ordinance. It had no bearing whether or not you had built it or not. Our review was strictly on, from the plans and the ordinance. And that's where we generated our letter from May 13th. Of course, it adds a wrinkle to it, the fact that you guys had already had a start because you had given, been given building permits. I don't know how that happened. I don't know how we got to where we got to, but we're there. So we got to come to a resolution. I, I really think it's advisable for you to have an attorney myself, but it's up to you.
All right. If, if we're going that route, are we able to be on next month meeting or are we months away?
My question to you is, you think you can be ready because you have to have everything into the board 10 days before, correct, Kristine?
Correct.
Yeah, but so you have to have it in by July fifth?
If I may, to the board, they basically do have everything here. It's just a matter of getting it on the record verbally.
Right.
For the board to.
It doesn't look like you're, you're going to require much in the way of submission. So.
Yeah, you could probably do the same plans again.
Right.
But a proper representation with an attorney probably the best way to go.
All right, understood, guys. I, I did not realize that there was, this was going to be this complicated.
Yeah. I have a question to you. Request that we can continue this hearing till July 16th without a notice. You got to repeat that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd also like them to present the, the the permits, the building permits, et cetera. I, I'd like to see a timeline of events of who did what and who said what.
That.
We're getting snowed or he's being treated poorly, very poorly.
Yes, I think we should. That's part of the evidence an attorney should probably bring in.
Photographs would help, I think.
Okay, so you, so to understand.
To grant their original permits.
You want copies of all permits? You want pictures of the house in its current state?
Correct. Right.
I mean, clear, I'm just going to say, you can see that it is in line with all your neighbors. I mean, we can see that, you know, we want to work with them, I think.
Well, we need testimony as to why, we need testimony as to why these variances shouldn't be granted.
And that's what your attorney, the attorney will help you do.
Okay. All right, understood, guys.
Technically, technically, your front yard setbacks, the, uh, number one and number two. The, the board requires a licensed surveyor, measures the front, all your neighbors within 200 feet up and down the road. So it's done by a licensed professional surveyor. And that document is what is used to submit. And if you, in fact, are within that, you won't need those two variances. They go away. So it's to your advantage. You want, when you get an attorney in here to talk to them about that. And if you have any questions, you can call my office.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, so this will be carried to July 16th without any further notice.
Without any further notice.
Correct.
Next case? Mr. Stone here?
I, I think I'm here. Can anybody hear me?
We hear you fine.
Mr. Stone, give me one second. Um, I know there are some people who have joined the meeting late. They've been coming in sporadically. I don't know if they announced that the man letter, uh, 217 Gate Avenue has been carried to the August 20th meeting. It will not be heard this evening. If you wish to participate, the information is on our website. Hopefully, we may be moving it up, but as of right now, it's going to be held via Zoom. But again, that was carried through August 20th without further notice. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. It's your case.
Uh, Mr. Rosenberg and members of the board. My name is Richard Stone. It's been quite a while since I've appeared before this board. Tonight, I'm privileged to represent the owners of property located at 306 Monmouth Avenue and Bradley. I anticipate that, first, I'd like to thank your board secretary, who's been very helpful along the way, particularly because this is one of the first virtual applications that I've handled. So the more cumbersome, we ask your patience. I'm assuming that the board has some preliminary information about what this application is about. I take it, you know, that at one point, the property owner, Mrs. Beth Kotler, obtained a permit to do construction on the rear garage apartment. That construction were prepared by Mr. Conasente. He probably have his plans in the exhibit list, but we're sad to know that Mickey Conasente unfortunately passed away. I have multiple witnesses, depending upon how long the board will allow me to proceed. I anticipate that there will be two experts. One will be my engineer, Mr. Larry Murphy, who will testify pretty much throughout the entire application. The second, this is Ms. Allison Corfins, who you know is a planner. I'm sure that she's been qualified before your board before. And the application would ordinarily, in my opinion, be rather straightforward, except that unfortunately during construction, there were field changes done to the construction of the property that were, that expanded the construction as permitted. And it's never the best situation to come before a board having exceeded the permitted approval. But those are the facts. And at some point, either now or later, I will explain to you how that developed, unfortunately, but it did. Construction, there, the property owners believed that what they were asking the builder to do were the minimum, the minimalist alterations and would be within the parameters of a, of maybe a field change. Well, they were not. But I think that there, there probably will be, I'm hoping there will be some give and take after I explain to you what the proposed application is. Although there are variances required, most of which are D variances and substantially many are, are, are already pre-existing non-conformities, but target issues that I'm going to touch on, but I'm really going to rely most heavily upon the experts. Number one, there is an issue with regard to a two-car garage. And the, the construction of the building would accommodate two vehicles on the inside of the garage space, but for the limited garage door. However, you're going to hear testimony that although the ordinance would ordinarily emphasize a two-car garage, the uniqueness of this property is that the unique, I'm sorry, I see. Is that, is that somebody else that's, that's about to talk?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. The uniqueness of the property is that the requirements of the application would be for four parking spaces off-street. Now, I've been around Bradley Beach a long time. And of course, I know that off-street parking is always emphasized because of the, particularly summer, when the parking is overcrowded. This particular application, you're going to see, even if there's only one vehicle in the garage, allows at least six off-street parking on the site. So there would be at least seven, maybe eight parking spaces off-street, where only four required. I'm going to let the experts explain that to you. In addition to that, the original approval was for the height of 24 foot on the garage, on the back garage unit. When the builder added to the, to the construction, he did two things. Number one, he put dormers. And the dormers were not to create living space on that elevated floor. You'll hear testimony that that portion of the floor is being set aside for attic storage or mechanicals. It's not high enough to accommodate a livable space. And you really can't get to it but by a ladder. However, the second reason the dormers were put on is that if anybody is familiar with the front house, you'll notice.
Mr. Stone, I got to stop you a minute. We have a councilman on who cannot be on in a zoning board meeting. Am I correct, Mr. Kittredge?
Who was?
Mr. Gobatose.
I, I can't, I can't hear you.
Mr. Gobat, Alan Gobatose is on page two. He's a councilman. He cannot be, councilman cannot be at a zoning board meeting, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Gobatose, we have to ask you to leave.
Mr. Rosenberg, can I ask you a question? I didn't take account of the number of members that, that participated in the earlier meetings. How many members are there?
We have a full, we have a full board here.
Oh, okay. So the fact that one of the members had to recuse themselves, that doesn't.
You still have seven left.
I still have a full contingent.
So has somebody recused themselves?
Yes.
Who's that?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Continue, Mr. Stone.
May I proceed, Mr. Rosenberg?
Gobatose is still on there.
Mr. Gobatose is still on.
Alan Gobatose, yeah, you got not allowed to be here.
Councilman not allowed to be here.
I, I don't see his picture.
No, but his name is there. Could you knock him off, Kristine?
I can.
Please, because he's not supposed to be there.
And we, we want the application to be able to proceed. We don't want any issues.
Okay.
May, may I proceed, Mr. Kittredge?
Let's see. Yeah, now you can.
True.
Okay. So I, I want to make it clear. If you take a look at the plans, and again, I'll have the engineer explain this. Excuse me. If you take a look at the front house, you'll notice that there's solar renewable energy, solar panels on the front house. In order to accommodate the number of panels on the back house, it, it made sense, at least to the property owner, to spread out the roof so that they can accommodate a few more panels. Because as part of this application, there's a representation that he intends to put renewable energy on the back house as well as the front. But by doing that, it elevated the house from the approved permit of 24 feet height to 25 feet, eight inches. And that requires the variance. And at some point during the construction, it was determined by, I guess, your code enforcement officer, and he was correct, that the expanded plan was outside the permits. And that brings me here today.
Okay.
If you will allow me.
All right, let, let's deal with some legal issues first. Okay. So first of all, I just want to address the issue that the chairman brought before. For those who are listening to the meeting, the, the, first of all, the, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. And the applications that come before this board are people who are appealing denials of submissions. And based on zoning ordinances, they're, they're, they're appealing denials on the zoning ordinances. And those ordinances are part of the land use laws that are adopted with, by the governing body in a municipality. So you're actually appealing government, the governing bodies enactments of the zoning ordinances. That's why members of the governing body do not participate in board of adjustment matters. Not the same as a planning board, but that's, that's what makes, that's what makes the zoning board unique. We're a quasi-judicial body, because we're hearing appeals from the governing body. So I just want to get that on the record. That's, 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 that's the reasoning. And also, we want to make sure that, you know, that, that, that those rules are followed with respect to the public and with respect to the applicant. So there is an objector in this case. Mr. Mr. Cohen has raised an objection. And he's raised a very specific objection as to the notice provision. And I think that's something that we should address at, at the beginning, because I think it's, it's relevant, because it, it, it speaks to whether or not the zoning board takes jurisdiction this evening. So Mr. Stone, have you, I, I, Mr. Cohen submitted his objection as to notice. Do, I, I, we're going to give Mr. Cohen an opportunity to make his case, but is there anything that you want to add regarding the notices that you, you provided this evening?
Yeah, I want to, I, may I ask a question or two, Mr. Kittredge?
Of course.
Okay. So the first question I would ask is in regard to the issue of the recusal or the, you know, the withdrawal of the, of the councilman. I take it that although he was, he didn't participate in any regard, and the fact that he removed himself briefly into the application, I don't believe that there's anything fatal about the fact that he was on and then removed himself.
I, I, I concur.
Okay. Now, in regard to the notice requirement, I have a couple of points I'd like to raise. So I have in front of me now the note that Mr. Cone provided. I have a question or two before I comment upon his objection. I'm not aware, and I, again, I, I've been around Bradley Beach for a long time. And I noticed that it was signed Thomas quote, T period, J period, unquote, Cone, Bradley Beach Public Advocate. Does Bradley Beach have a position in its community organization of a public advocate?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Is there, is there an appoint, and again, I'm not putting you on the spot, but I'm, I'm assuming that Mr. Cohen is providing this as a citizen, which of course he has a right to do. But the fact that he would present something named with a, with a caricature of a public advocate would suggest that he's speaking for the entirety of the borough of Bradley Beach. And I think that it is inappropriate, unless of course, he's an appointed representative of the borough, of which I'm not aware. I look to see whether or not he, it was an elected appointment, or the mayor appointed him, or one of the plant, either the planning board or the zoning board. But to place his name the plant, either the planning board or the zoning board. But to place his name gives some type of enhanced credibility to a position when he's a citizen. And of course, he has a right as a citizen to make that objection. I would just, well, I, I'd like to point out that I think that's inappropriate should the matter ever go up on appeal. Number two, I know that as an applicant's attorney, the applicant has an obligation under the ordinance and under the municipal land use statute to provide information so the public can review that information timely so that it might appropriately prepare for any issues that, uh, might, uh, might arise. So that the public is aware. It has always been my position that an objector has a similar obligation. And, uh, this, uh, rather extensive, uh, objection with attachments was received by my office, uh, early, mid-afternoon and I, and only because I contacted your board secretary to find out where I was and she was kind enough to advise that there had been an objection. So, um, as far as the written objection is concerned, I object to that. If Mr. Cone wants to make a verbal objection, I think he has a right to do it. As a citizen, not as a public advocate. I think that's inappropriate. So I'd like to hear what his objection is, other than having to read it in a form. Uh, I don't know his qualification. I don't know whether or not he's, uh, an attorney. So does he have that skill? And I'd like to know whether, if he has an objection, I, I'd like to hear him place on the record so that I can respond to each one or at least have one or both of my experts do the same.
Mr. Kittredge, is that the way we should continue?
Yeah, I, yes, and, uh, that's fair. And I'm just going to swear, Mr. Cohen, and because I, I do know he's not an attorney, so I'll swear I'm in. Uh, do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
All right, thank you.
And I would, uh, I would strike the public advocate from the record. That's, that's a self-proclaimed position because I, I've been watching out for the Borough Bradley Beach for many years and I believe successfully both in this forum and many other forums. Uh, that being said, I'd be happy to put my, um, my, my objections about this notice that was, uh, sent out. Um, it, it appears to me to not be a truthful statement to the public. Uh, it, it's requesting variances to demolish the existing garage and construct a two-story structure, which will have a two-car garage on the first floor and a residential apartment above. Well, reading that and then riding by the property after receiving the notice, you would assume that the existing structure is going to be torn down. Well, that's not the case. That demolition has already taken place, but is not reflected in this notice. Secondarily, there's no mention of the loft. There's no mention of the loft stair access or there's no mention of the dormers. Also, it indicates a two-car garage. And clearly, there's a one-car garage there. So you're not supplying a two-car garage. So these are very misleading statements and it appears to be fiction to me. So I would appreciate if this was re-noticed properly, letting all public members of the Borough Bradley Beach to understand what the true application is and then come back at a July or August meeting. Um, in addition to that, I, I would like to say that it's a very unique situation that the property's already been built. So I would recommend to the board and to the public that we should probably have an onsite inspection because we're not just looking at plans, we're looking at a structure that's built. So the board should have the right to go in and, and review that in an onsite inspection and the public also. So I, I stand by my complaint. I would, uh, take off and my, my, uh, public advocate tag as it is self-proclaimed, Mr. Stone. But I do stand by my arguments that this is a faulty notice created by your office and it, and it appears to me to be fiction. Thank you, sir.
So, so just, and Mr. Stone can respond, but there's a, you, you did address the public advocate.
Yes, I did.
Yeah. Yeah, you did address that, but the, the one thing, um, he, uh, Mr. Stone brought up is, uh, the notice that you provided. Why, why did he only get that today through the, uh, board secretary?
Uh, Mr. Kittredge, I, I, as, as a self-proclaimed public advocate, I have always felt that the 10-day notice and burying a notice in the back of the Esbry Park Press on a Sunday is, is really not public notice. It's really not fair to the residents. And I believe the state of New Jersey, even though it's 10 days, uh, it is, it should be 30 days because the-
Well, I know, but it's not, it's not, it's not.
Okay. That, that being said, there's no, I could have just shown up at the meeting and handed out my, could I not, Mr. Kittredge?
Yeah, I, I'm just asking you to address his, he, he, he brought it up, just to address it.
Well, well, I didn't, I gave him the courtesy of sending it at 1 o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah.
In a regular scenario, I would have come to the meeting and entered every objection and every exhibit at the meeting. I wasn't given that opportunity based on COVID-19. So as a layperson, I felt it fair to give Mr. Stone the notice before the meeting and not during the meeting and also have all my exhibits on the record for the board secretary.
Mr. Stone?
Yes. So let's deal, uh, let's get off the, uh, the timing. Uh, those of us who practice municipal land use know that the statute provides a very strict notice where the applicant's notices have to be published, how they have to be served against, uh, the surrounding property owners. And there's a reason for that. And I've always felt, uh, similar to Mr. Cohen's argument, that, uh, objectors who have, uh, who are self-proclaimed public advocates, who have familiarity with the system, uh, he could have provided me with this, uh, objection, uh, three weeks ago. Uh, and he certainly knew about it then, but he laid in wait for the applicant to move the application and he decided he was going to do it tonight of the application. But I'll be, uh, let me deal with the substance of the notice. I believe if you take a look at the notice both published and served, it more than adequately serves upon those interested parties.
You walk, I see.
What, what the substance of the application's about. So the fact that it references a demolition, uh, certainly the, uh, prior building before the permit was issued and constructed, uh, that building had to be demolished and it had to be reconstructed. That's exactly what happened. In regard to the dormers, that's one of the reasons we're here. We do not have to specifically reference the dormers because they don't exceed the height requirement. The height of 8 inches above the 25-inch requirement, it's clear that we placed that into the notice requirement. In regard to the, the garage, which Mr. Cone objects to, that it's a one-car garage, I, you will hear some testimony from one or both of the witnesses that the garage is of a size that it can accommodate with maneuvering the vehicles around, two vehicles. It's 18 by 20, which would accommodate two vehicles. But because the request of a one-car garage is a D variance, and we believe that it's the minimus, it would be covered under the catch-all language of any and all additional, uh, variances required. So any fair reading of this notice certainly puts the public on notice itself as to what the applicant's, uh, what relief is being sought by the applicant.
I just have a question for you, um, Mr. Stone. I, I didn't quite follow the, the D variance statement.
Well, in the event that during the course of the application, the testimony is that there will only be a one-car, uh, the, the garage will only be used for one car instead of two cars. There has to be some testimony with respect to whether or not off-street parking is being accommodated. And if the testimony, as I've just referenced, is that there will be at least seven total parking spaces where four are required, that would be a, a D variance and would be, would be, uh, handled within the catch-all provision of the notice requirement.
Okay. So, um, just so I understand, so you, you noticed for a two-car garage, correct?
Yes, we did. And, and we have a two-car garage.
Right. Okay. So in this, but in the scenario, I think that you're laying out that if it's deemed to be a one-car garage, then you, you would need a use variance. And your position is the catch-all language would cover that situation?
I, I think-
Okay.
With that limited scenario.
Yeah. So I would advise you the following. My position would be that, um, if you did require a use variance, that, and I don't know, we, we haven't heard any testimony. So I, and, and the board couldn't take a position on that without hearing testimony. But if you needed a D variance, um, my view is that the catch-all language would not cover securing a, a, a use variance.
Okay. May, may I, uh, may I do something? Um, I have two of my experts that are available. Uh, may I inquire that they can hear what I'm saying? Uh, Mr. Murphy, can you hear me?
Yes.
And, uh, uh, Ms. Coffin, Coffin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Larry-
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Mr. Kittred-
Don't have to be sworn in?
I'm going to ask him to be sworn in now.
All right. So what's, what's the, I, I'm just going to ask you, what's the purpose of having them?
I would like them to explain a little bit more at length to respond to your question about the, the, uh, the one-car garage notice.
Well, I, I'm not sure why we need to hear from them. I, I, I'm not questioning whether it's, 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 you're, you're going to be able to prove it's a two-car garage or it's going to be a one-car garage. All I'm saying is that if you need a use variance, you have to notice for a use variance.
I, and I agree with that.
And the cat, and you know, we call it the catch-all language. I think that's, that's appropriate if there are additional bulk variances that-
I, I agree, but I misspoke. I misspoke.
Okay.
I misspoke. For the, uh, I do not need a D variance for the garage. I need a C variance for the garage. And that, I misspoke. I'm reading both my boots. And that was an error on my part.
All right.
So, I'm not, look, I don't need a use variance for the garage. And that's why it's, it's within the catch-all language.
Okay.
That was a mistake.
I follow you. Understood.
Um, I mean, do we have a determination, Mr. Kittredge? I mean, there's no mention of the loft in here. There's no mention of a two-and-a-half-story structure. Uh, it says a two-story structure. This is clearly a two-and-a-half-story structure with windows on the half-story. So again, this is not what the pub, the public needs to know exactly what is going on. I find this to be a faulty notice and I would request that it be re-noticed and come back and especially at this late hour, sir.
Is, is, is the, is the, is the, Mr. Stone, is the, is the proposal before the board a, a two-story or two-and-a-half-story?
Two-and-a-half story.
Okay. And-
Can I make a suggestion? I have a suggestion. It's about 10 after 10. Am I correct? How late does the board go?
We went to 10 o'clock. We're giving you the courtesy right now.
So I propose that, I, I don't happen to agree with Mr. Cone. And, uh, certainly, I'm not going to complete my application tonight. I think we can all agree upon that. You've already heard three or four applications. It's been a long night. I think that we should carry the application, even though I don't think it's necessary, in order to assure that there's no jurisdictional issue, I will re-notice.
Okay.
So that we can remove that, uh, that, my opinion is that it's fallacious, but you know what, it's, if it was 7 o'clock, I would press on. And it's 10 after 10 and it's already been a long night for everybody.
You know, the one thing, I just want to say one thing is, you know, it's going to be beautiful. Uh, there is one door. Two cars go in there and there's one door because they wanted lighting and safety for their daughter to get in. So I guess, knowing, knowing this structure myself-
Yeah, I, I don't think we should talk, I don't think we should talk about the-
You have to have two doors. That's going to be, that's what I want them to know, the rest of the board.
I, I just don't think we should talk about the application right now.
Okay.
Mr. Kittredge, I, I appreciate Mr. Stone's professionalism and I look forward to the carried meeting and the new notice a, as, uh, stating the proper facts of the case. Thank you, sir.
When, when do you, when, Mr. Stone, when would you like to carry it? Till July?
Tell me, uh, I, I think you've already said that there's a meeting on the 16th. Am I right?
Correct.
And when is the meeting in August?
20th or something like that. August will be, uh,
It's the 20th.
20th.
So, uh, uh, I'm, I'm going to ask the carrier to the 16th.
But you're going to re-notice?
Oh, wait a minute. Hold on a second. One of my experts is not available on the 16th. I have to carry it till August 20th.
Okay.
Coffin is not available on the 16th.
Okay.
So, well, I will re-notice and, um, and we'll mark it for the, uh, for the 20th and I will waive any time. Can I do that orally, Mr. Kittredge?
Yeah, that's acceptable to me, Mr. Stone.
Okay.
Re-noticing it, so.
Yeah. Oh, that's true. Okay.
Kristy will be the first case that night, please?
Will I be on the first, first case that night?
What about the other ones that were carried?
Who was carried?
They're July, though, aren't they?
Oh, they're July. Um, give me one second.
The 217 McCabe, that could be the second case.
They'll be the second case, yes.
Mr. Stone will be the first case.
Butler will be first, yes.
Okay.
And I think then August is going to be filled up.
All right. So it'll be carried to August 20th?
With notice.
Hey, hold on. Uh, okay, let's put it on for the 20th. And then, uh, if there is a, uh, if there's any issue with that, I'll call the board secretary and let you know. All right?
Okay. Very good.
Let me thank the members of the board, Mr. Kittredge, uh, Kristy and everybody else. And I look forward to the application. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we adjourn till July 16th.
All righty.
All moved.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank everybody. Stay, stay healthy.
Be safe.
Good.
Be with you.
Thank you all.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone.
Did a good job, Kristy.
Excellent job.